It being 7:01 PM on Monday, March 14th, 2022. I'll call this regular meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
I'm very good, I fell asleep. Okay, Mrs. Cormier.
Present.
Mrs. Hurst.
Present.
Mr. LaFreniere.
Present.
This is Layton.
Present.
This is Palavan.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
Dr. Pellegrino.
Present.
And Gino DeVito.
Present.
All present, thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is open time for the general public. Is there anyone from the general public here who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, moving on to recognitions by the superintendent, Dr. Pellegrino.
First, I'm actually asking this person to come up with me if she would mind. So Katie Abbott has been the president of CPAC for how many years now?
Six.
Six.
Six, we've been going since six.
Six years. Every year, she's done a wonderful job. Maybe she collects information from parents and she was a very strong advocate with me. We sat down in my office for hours on end with Ms. Hurst as well. But she really pushed me in a respectful but not at times forceful way to make sure the district's going in the right direction and we're answering students' needs. And I have to say, especially during COVID, it was really hard and she did a very specific survey to really try to find out how do students who have an IEP or a 504, what do they need? What are their questions? Just some basic questions like, you know, what's your next meeting going to look like? Do you know? And she gave me a lot of information to try to help clear up that communication, make sure that we're reaching out to our families and that we're supporting our most needed population, quite frankly. She's done a great job over the years, but I don't think anybody could say it better than Ms. Hurst, who's been working side by side with Katie for a long time.
She has done a phenomenal job. She's, you know, been the voice for special education within the district. She's been a liaison between the parents and the administration and they couldn't have asked for anybody more dedicated to the position than she was. And you are going to be saddened with this.
Big shoes to fill.
They are, they are.
But congratulations and thank you for all you've done for the district and for our schools.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Come on out here, Rob.
Where are you going?
Right here.
Get the podium out of the way, pull back.
Slide, slide, slide.
Just stand on the table, it'll show up behind.
Just photobomb them back.
I pretend there were pictures. I was always in the back because of the school board. I'm like, right.
So the next person, I just wanted to make sure I got the right person, big article in the paper and I expect to be sitting right here, Dan Fort. So after I chose to recognize Dan for all his contributions to Gardner Sports, so first off, I had to let you know, I met Dan actually at National Honor Society. It was the first time I actually met him way before, not way before, but months before he became our athletic director. He was there because he had coached a girl, I blanked on the girl's name.
Becca.
Becca, oh, that was Becca Lachlan?
Yep.
Okay. So Becca brought him up as just an inspiration in terms of not only coaching him in sports and on the field, but in life. And I said, wow, that would be a great person to have working for us. And just a few months later, we have him working for us. And not only does he do so much work with our students and, you know, in our varsity and JV sports, but he also does a ton of community work as our rec director as well. And so he's combined a lot of that and the program each year has been growing. We're really excited every year. He gets more and more energized about it, especially as, you know, masks come off and kids can really get out there and play sports. So he's been an inspiration and a bundle of energy. And even after, you know, I chose him to recognize him tonight, he actually won the Ted Dampco Award for athletic directors. And that's for athletic directors who are, athletic directors under five years, but have made significant contributions to the sports programs as well as the community. And Dan definitely exemplifies that. Yeah, I just wondered, we didn't win the sportsmanship award?
We did, yes.
For MIA?
Yes.
So we won that award as well. So creating this culture, again, to get kids excited about sports, to get kids excited and staying in Gardner, he's really starting to create that culture and it's coming back in force. So I thank you, Dan, for all that you do. You've been wonderful and you will continue to be wonderful. And he's only allowed to work for Gardner, I think, we signed that. However, because Dan is also a city employee as our recreation director outside of the school department, we have his city employee recognition to give him tonight as well as recognition from the superintendent. So thank you, Dan.
Still, this is not true.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the public hearing for the FY23 school budget. I'll hereby read the public hearing notice. Public notice, Gardner Public Schools Budget Hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38, and a public hearing for the proposed 2022-2023 school budget will be held on Monday, March 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, Gardner City Hall Council Chambers, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner MA 01440, received by the City Clerk's Office and posted on the 24th of February, 2022, at 11:06 AM. I'll hereby declare the hearing open. And Director Ha, or are you sorry? Yeah, yeah. Dr. Pellegrino, you can start with your presentation, followed by open time for comments from the general public. Excellent. So for our budget this year, some things that I'd like to go over. First off, it's just changing demographics. And oftentimes, the changing demographics include an increased high-needs population, economically disadvantaged population, students with special needs and English learners have all grown. And what that means is needs are, we have very high-needs population in the district, which means they need support to make sure that all students can succeed. So as you can see, each year, it's kind of gone up a little bit more. And this year, economically disadvantaged actually went over 70% for '21. So as you can see, the population is definitely changing. And this is, these are students that were leaving the districts, leaving the district. So this is for out-of-district placement costs through FY21. Again, these costs continue to rise. I will say Joyce West has done a phenomenal job of doing all we can within the district to keep our kids in the district. You know, unfortunately, you know, each year, we have different and varied needs that we can't really plan for when it comes to out-of-district costs. So we have students who come in who are already in out-of-district placements and the folks move to our district. And so those are our students. And so we make sure we do all we can to take care of them and so they continue to move forward with their lives. Additionally, when we look at our school choice, so these are our school, this is our school choice trend, and this is the number of students that, so in red is the number of students who are school choicing to other districts, and the blue is school choicing into Gardner. And as you can see, there was a slight dip in the number of students coming to Gardner from 161 to 151. Not surprising because we shut down a lot of the grades last year because we were so concerned about class sizes and making sure we had social distancing, so we shut down a lot of the grades. But as you can see, the most important number to me is school choice out. What we want to do is make sure we have an exceptional school system that makes students want to stay here and fewer and fewer students leaving our district. And as you can see, the trend since 2019 has been, students leaving the district has been going down. What does this mean to us in terms of money? Well, red again means is the cost of students leaving the district and blue is the income that we receive through school choice. And again, the trend is we're staying pretty steady for income, but our school choice out continues to go down and the cost of school choice, students leaving our district, is going down. Let's see if this works. So back in March of 2020, we met with over 50 stakeholders at Gardner High School and we focused on, we talked to different stakeholders, parents, community members, our CPAC president, teachers, current students, nurses, all came to this event to talk about what are the needs for Gardner Public Schools. And we identified, we have some significant learning gaps and achievement gaps, as well as social, emotional gaps and outcomes for our students with disabilities, our English learners, our economically disadvantaged students, our Hispanic and Latinx students, our African American students. So when we identified those groups as having disproportionality in their outcomes, we said, well, what can we do to address this? And according to the state, we had to identify what are our strategies to address these learning gaps. And the group together chose strategies two, three, four, six, and 12. Strategy two is research-based early literacy programs in pre-K and early elementary schools. So we're focused a lot on, and as you probably saw in the paper, we actually just got another grant to get a new, the newest wonders program for our early literacy program. But we've invested a lot of money into training and supportive staff, making sure that our earliest learners are learning to read, so that way they can later on read to learn. And early college, our early college program, quite frankly, has been very robust. We continue to grow that program with Mount Watch Uset Community College. And I'll show you some, yeah, we'll talk a little bit later about how we're supporting that program going forward. Supporting educators and high-quality aligned curriculum, this is our MTSS program. As you remember, last year, we invested $100,000, over $100,000 in teacher leader positions, stipends, for teachers to do that extra work because it's a very heavy lift, making sure that we're all aligned and we're all, all students are learning at a high level. Increase personnel and services to support holistic student needs. This is especially at our elementary schools. As you remember, you know, we said we needed to make sure that we're getting students the supports they need in school, to keep kids in school and make sure that they're learning. And we've invested a lot of money in our early elementary and programs for our students with special needs. And then finally, increase staffing to expand student access to the arts, athletics, enrichment, and strategic scheduling to have common planning time. And actually, we've accomplished that now, where teachers now have common planning time throughout the district. And so what we did was, again, during this process to develop the budget, we get together with principals and directors, they submit a level-funded expense budget saying, if this is what we got from last year and we had the same this year, what would it look like? We then prioritize the needs for additional staff and we list out, so what are the services that we need, what other positions do we need to fill? And then we actually cut, I think it was 1.2 million this year? What was it? Oh, it was only, that was 500,000. Oh, thank you. Oh, it's actually, it's on the slide. We, what we did was, we cut 500,000 from the budget, so each school cut a certain amount of money. What this does is, it makes us say, okay, so what are our most important needs? Because then as we looked at our needs and the positions that we had and we cut, we said, okay, what's the first most important position to go in there? And that might be a position we don't have yet. And so that might actually replace, if we got a level services budget, might replace another position. So it's really important that every year, we make sure that we're putting our highest priority positions in. And each year, we're making, we're going through the entire district and looking at it through district needs. So oftentimes, the high school may give up something to make sure that the elementary schools get a position that they need. Any questions on that process? I know I've gone over this with you all several times, I guess for the at-home audience. Then they meet with me and obviously my cabinet, and we go around February, we integrate and prioritize all these individual lists. And then this is what the outcome of that was. And so at the very top here, these are positions that we said we need to put into our budget. And one's a reading tutor at Gardner Middle School. At the district level, we did say we need an English learner director. Now, this is something that's required. We're now, we now have, the English learner population has increased to over 100, and that's a pretty steady number. When you're over 100, you need to have an English language director. Right now, Dr. Gogan has been serving as our English language director, which was okay until this point, but now we actually have to have an English learner director who will also be a part-time teacher. So the person will still be working in the school, will work in the schools, as well as leading our seven, I think we have, English language learner teachers? We're also going to be hiring an early college coordinator. So this, this would actually work with Mount Watch Uset Community College, would work with area businesses to develop internships, capstone projects, work with students to recruit them, make sure that we're meeting our outcomes that we're looking for in terms of being college-ready. I'm really excited about this position and I have to say, this is actually just being financed through a restructured deal with Mount Watch Uset Community College. So we're actually saving some money on some of our other programs that we usually pay for, and by those savings, we're going to be able to pay for this position. So it won't actually impact the budget. We also said at Gardner Elementary School, so GES is the new Watford Street School and Elm Street School, so GES needs another sub-separate program, which will cost approximately $130,000 between the teacher salary and the RBD, the registered behavioral technicians and any aides that are needed in the program, that'll be approximately $130,000. All of those adds meet, address our Student Opportunity Act requirements. And so they're all aligned with our strategies. Additionally, we need an additional maintenance person. Right now, we've been down a person and we actually got through the past, what, about a year? About a year now, with the city taking care of our landscaping, but that is no longer possible. So we actually have to do something to take that over and have that done by ourselves. We're also looking for small, some positions over the summer for $20,000, $15,000, and that will be some entry-level positions to help maintain the fields and the landscaping over the summer. We need another school year secretary at Gardner High School. What we found is the amount of work has just been overwhelming in the program and they're barely making it fit. They have, they do have student interns in the office, but frankly, we need, we do need a full-time professional secretary. We also talked about adding two weeks for our secretaries, which would help with our registration process, making sure that it's accurate for parents, and then a weight room and track coach, and that was Dan advocating for that because if we're, as our programs are starting to grow, having a track coach and somebody to help with weights will definitely help our programs. So the priorities that meet the Student Opportunity Act priorities, it was about $360,000. Other additions, $116,000. So the total added additions are $476,350, but the total budget impact is $391,350 because of the early college coordinator position is essentially paid for. Are there any questions on those additions? So no positions are, we're not recommending eliminating any positions. Various expense lines have been condensed to achieve a $79,423 reduction. Our salaries this year have some different levels of increase depending on the need. As you can see, again, special education, we've been putting more and more services towards special education and that's why that number continues to grow. Any questions on salaries? Our expenses, same thing, not huge differences. Other programs, I do want to say that's our out-of-district placements, and so that's expected to rise 15%. Our circuit breaker, which we like to mention each year in FY22, we received $357,310 and what that allows us to do is subtract that from next year's budget. So as you know, we put that money right towards the out-of-district placements for next year. So each time we have, each time we get this money, we plan it right away, but it makes it much more consistent in terms of, for planning purposes, to know exactly how much we're putting for next year. Any questions on circuit breaker? Costs that don't apply to net school spending? Regular education transportation, we are going to need, now that we have one combined school, an additional bus, and this, the cost will be $65,700 for that. McKinney-Vento, again, is our transportation for homeless students, was not an increase, but as you can see, our foster care transportation went up $47,000 and our special education transportation went up $204,046.
That's because we get an increase in special needs students because of special education.
Yes, we will need, right now, we have five buses and we're getting a sixth, or is it four buses and we're getting a fifth?
For the in-district transportation.
In, thank you. So revenue projection, as you can see, our state funding is, went up by $2 million to $2.2 million, moving to FY23 for $23,307,999. Required net school spending went up by $392,239. The city is able to fund us over net school spending by $500,000. So this is a pretty, this is our first significant Student with Opportunity Act money by getting from the state the Chapter 70 funds of $2.2 million. Last year, as you may recall, we only got $68,000 from the SOA and that did not even make a dent in anything that we needed to do. So this is the first year we're actually receiving significant funds. However, even with those significant funds, we're looking at a budget gap of $795,735. We'll be paying for that through our ESER funds, and so we're able to do this. And as we've been, and this is, that increase, actually, most of it, believe it or not, is last, in the last two weeks, we've had five families move into our district that already had students who were out-of-district placed. So almost, almost all of that is from those movements, which was totally unexpected. This is, the funding, as you can see, the funding for the schools over minimum net school spending is going up from $359,000 to $500,000 above minimum net school spending.
Is there anybody from the public? Are there any questions from the school committee members first, before we? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, and again, this was posted per the requirements of the general laws, but if there's no questions or comments?
I just want to thank you, the mayor, and the city council to be able to, oh, now I shouldn't say overspend, but to provide those funds that we greatly need to operate the school district. I thank you, sir, and city council.
Thank you.
Do you guys dig deep and were able to provide?
Mrs. Hurst.
I just wanted to thank our state rep, John Zlatnik, because he's on the committee that redid this formula. You know, and I've done legislative advocacy for a long time and I always taught parents, you need to fake your, you know, your legislators. He's invested in this community and in the schools. He lives in here and we're very lucky to have him.
I will say on my end, because I do get to speak because it's a public hearing on this one, that I am happy to see that we are having a year where we aren't cutting any positions. When you look at other districts across the state that have cut positions by a lot in the past two, three years as a result of the pandemic, where we really haven't cut a single position. That says a lot about our school district, I feel like.
Certainly has.
It's great to hear that. Also, just a note on the city's over net school spending, I think a lot of it, kind of where we took that big dip there, dealt with the fact that where Chapter 70 was flatlined for one fiscal year and then only went up by 60,000 the following year after that, we had to cover up a lot of where that funding was going to out of the pot that we had there too. So I'm glad we can start to take that back up to where it used to be and start, and get it out of regular school spending and into the above net school spending allocation as well. Any other questions, comments, concerns from members of the committee? Any questions, comments, concerns last time? Because I have to say it twice by law for members of the general public. All right, I'll hereby declare the hearing closed. Is there a motion on the floor?
So, what's the meeting?
To adopt the budget.
Oh, adopt the budget, I'm sorry. Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. LaFreniere, seconded by Attorney Palavan to adopt the fiscal year 2023 school budget as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And just to clarify, the amount we're voting on, is that the correct amount, the 35, the 35? Okay. Yeah, the 35,324,865.
Correct. Any other discussion on the motion?
Second.
Oh, sorry, you've been seconded. Hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mrs. Cormier to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Item G, Subcommittee Reports, Facilities Subcommittee, Mr. Schwartz.
Facility Subcommittee met on February 15th and we met at Elm Street School. And in my mind, it was, it was good to go back. That was the old high school and I sort of graduated from this. I did graduate, not sort of, I did graduate way back when. One thing I note, Mr. Anderson presented us color samples for the new GMS lockets of red, blue, and green, and someone might say, what? And really what they do is they sort of match the color trend of the corridor floors of those, of those classes, of the upper three floors. That's what they do, is they match the floor. Personally, I think they're going to have problems with that, but somebody made that decision, so I guess I'll go along with that decision. Attached to your minutes are the project list that Mr. Anderson provided. We went over the project list. He changed the format a little, just a little bit, and added things that they're working on and completed are in a different color format. on and completed are in a different color format, just to let us know things are progressing. We had a conversation about the old elevator at the Elm Street School. For those of you that don't know, there are two. There's a main elevator somewhere near the middle of the building, but actually, it's off the gym, and then on the south side of the building, there's another elevator that has not been used, and Mr. Anderson is researching with the Department of Public Safety and an elevator company that we contracted with, what we need to do to try to get that back into service, because when gulf goes in there and the superintendent's office, full superintendent's office goes in there, we're going to be needing that elevator. So that'll be things to come, is what we need to do to recover that elevator. Now, the interesting thing is, Mr. Anderson is going to coordinate with Johnson Controls to install and activate the S2 Building Access system upgrades. Now, the upgrades were done, were done in all the schools, and some of them haven't been completed yet, but what needs to be done is, each system needs to be activated without activating the alarm of the rest of the system. So he has to coordinate that with Johnson and Controls, how to figure, how to figure how to do that. So that's one thing that we discussed. We, we keep mentioning the antifreeze to be installed in the heating systems at the middle school, and I believe at the high school, and that's a contract thing. Should have been done, I'm not sure whether it has, has or not, we'll find out by the next meeting. Landry Auditorium Contractor is in a process of preparing the chairs for painting, and painting all the metal parts, and then installing all the cushions, and I believe the new floor is in, it's vinyl, I believe a vinyl floor, and the wooden part, which would be epoxy, that'll be done during the summer, only because of the volatile vapors in that, in that material, that'll be done in the summertime. And we have to get ready for the high school plays, so that's why we're really pushing to get this thing done. The 13 security cameras at the high school are to be replaced. Those are upgraded cameras to keep our system and to go along with the new S2 system. And the superintendent and Mr. Hock and, and Mr. Anderson, and then visiting the Elm Street School frequently for the past month or so, so they're coming up with their concepts of what needs to be done to move the gulf over, as well as the entire superintendent's office. So they, they need to really look at it, sort of war game it, in a way, and then hopefully determine who goes where, and that should be done very soon. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schwartz, any questions, comments, concerns on that report? Hearing none, moving on to Finance Subcommittee, Attorney Palavan.
The Finance Subcommittee met on March 7th. We went over the budget review, the fiscal year '23 budget review, where we discussed the shortfall, like was just presented, and how that will be covered under the ESAR funds, and we went over the different budget sheets that make up the full budget, and had many questions that we asked and were answered. We went over the expense report, as usual. A few noted pieces were the substitute line were in the negative, and that's due to all the coverage that was needed during the COVID spike for the different teachers and paras and others that were out. The substitute nurse line had been replenished, as we had gotten grant funds for that. The police and fire lot, fire line is for details that were needed during various sporting events, and it's in the negative, but that'll be able to be made up within the budget the end of the year. The gas and electric accounts had not been budgeted correctly due to the pandemic, that will also be able to be made up. There, there was an unbudgeted use of paper towels for the Gardner Middle School, as the hand dryers had been turned off, but now are turned back on again. The principal at Waterford Street School had received a salary bump when he started taking over Elm Street School as well. The professional line item for, oh, the professional services line item was in the negative due to the fact that we had to do a, outsource a special ed teacher, and we discussed the fact that all the negative accounts will be made up within the existing budget, and that the Elm Street School teachers' negative line had continued to drop as they were, it had been at $300,000 previously, it was down to $276,000 in the red. We also went over the different projects. Mr. Hock provided us updates. We discussed the preschool tuition, and discussed the fact that we're gonna, that Joyce West is looking at the surrounding towns to see what they're doing, and we'll have a further discussion on that, and that was it.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to Item H, Student Advisory Board Update, Mr. DeVito.
So, not much today, but the hockey team fought hard a few weeks ago in their district playoff game, but ultimately lost 3-0 to Greenfield, while they had a good run on their season. The play is to be, play is to be performed this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in the newly renovated auditorium. Diversity Night will be held this Wednesday night in the large gym at the high school. And during the month of March, on Tuesday and Wednesday nights, students, and majority of them are student athletes, are volunteering clinics hosted by Coach Dan, to, one for, generally for soccer, and then the other one is for three-to-five-year-olds to introduce them to sports itself and essential skills. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. DeVito? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you may have an outdated agenda, but you forgot the policy.
I have those as Item I of the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. But next item on the agenda, Item I, Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Schwartz. Mrs. Hurst, sorry about that.
The Policy Subcommittee met on March 10th. We, tonight, we have one policy for first read, five for second read, and three for removal. The one for first read is EBCFA, it's face coverings. We had a pretty robust discussion about that. And you can review it in your packet, but we recommended that it go to Becky McCaffrey and, you know, for approval. The second reading of policies is Policies DA, Fiscal Management Goals, DB, Annual Budget, DD, Grants Proposals and Special Projects, DIE, Audits, and DJ Purchasing. Need a motion to accept those?
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Mrs. Layton, to send those to their second and final printing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Schwartz.
I've got some changes, suggested changes. One thing I've noted, and I'm finally going to speak up about it, that when I was on the Policy Committee way back when, that when you make changes to policy, whether it's deletions or additions, that, at the bottom of each policy, we put in a review, and it actually, when you make changes, should be revised rather than reviewed. And then when you review a policy and you make no changes whatsoever, you reviewed it, it's acceptable, then you put the remark, "reviewed." That's that part of the comment. Then on the Policy DBCFA, that's Item 3385, it would seem to me that the policy is in the, like, indicating all of the federal agencies that established the policy, the DESI and everything, that the Gardner Health Department ought to be included, because there may be some sort of health situation that only affects the city, that would require masking, and that they should be added as a source or directive of, of, of requiring the use of masks. I offer that as a suggestion. Then on the Policy DJ and Purchasing, is, on this third paragraph, there's a remark in there about the School Business Administrator, and I believe the new title of that is Director of Finance and Operations, and so just switch that to Director of Finance and Operations. And to me, that would bring that up to date. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Just for clarification, the EBCFA face coverings policy, since that's only going to first reading, that's not part of the vote this evening?
Okay.
So that can be presented for the next.
And I just want to make a comment. So the reason why we wrote it that way is that the protocol document that goes along with it, so our policy says one things, and it refers to procedures and protocols, that will then explain all of those pieces, and we've done it this way because obviously, at times, the face covering rules will change, and to change a policy, it can take three months to get that change in. So the protocol document that goes along with it can be changed without us having to have a first read and a secondary.
And just offer that.
Yeah. But, so that does exist, those pieces exist, it's just in the protocols and procedures.
It's, it's kind of outlined in the minutes as well.
And then, your suggestions for the other policies that are being voted on this evening, DJ.
Purchasing.
Purchasing, for the change in the title and in adding the revised instead of reviewed, is that in the form of a?
Just changing the School Business Administrator to the Director of Finance and Operations.
And is that being done as a motion to amend? Is that a motion to amend?
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend that policy.
Okay, is there a second?
You can disagree with me.
Well, no, it's not that, I just don't know procedurally if we can do that, because we have to do a first, send it back for the Policy Committee to go through.
Back to first printing.
We'll have to go review it again, send it for first read, and.
There being no objection, why don't we send this back to the Policy Subcommittee for more time?
Just DJ.
Just DJ.
Okay.
And the rest will be voting on DA, DB, DD, and DIE. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Sorry, but I read them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3387, COVID-19 update, Dr. Filigino.
We still have removal of policies, GA, GBAA Sexual Harassment, GBAA dash E, School Acknowledgement Form, and GBBA Harassment. Those three are being replaced with one policy, Policy AC. What's the policy that we have? That we already have, but it covers all those things in it. So it seems kind of redundant to have to keep updating policies where it's all covered in, in one. So we need to, a motion to remove those three policies.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, is there a second? Seconded by Attorney Palavan. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I just wanted to comment that, so what had happened is, I think in 2019, the new AC policy had been passed, and there's an extensive procedural document that goes along with it, and at the time when that was adopted, we didn't do the removal of the other policies and vote on it, so that's why we're voting to remove those three policies, because they're already covered in the other document that we had, an attorney had actually helped at the time to draft it, to make sure we were covering all of the legal pieces.
Could I ask, Policy Subcommittee, because it wasn't included on the agenda, and could you give me all that in general?
It was the revised agenda that was emailed out.
Yeah.
So the revision, we can send you the revision for that, for sure.
I'll give you my call.
Could I, could you provide?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, is there any other discussion on that motion?
Mrs. Blom, and Mrs. Hurst made the motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Blom, seconded it?
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, Item 3387, COVID-19 Update, Dr. Filigino.
So numbers, I just talked with Nurse McCaffrey today, numbers are still trending in the right direction, and she's actually talking about using our Health and Safety Committee in, in just a different way. It seems like they're meeting every other week, and now it doesn't seem to need, to meet as often. They do want to continue to meet, just to make sure that, actually, they're going to redefine themselves, so I'm not even sure what they're going to look like, but they're talking about, again, just involving everyone and continuing on, but it won't be necessarily just, we'll be keeping an eye on the numbers, but not as closely tracking them. I think they've done a great job, though, getting us through this.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Schwartz.
I would certainly endorse the continuance of the Safety Committee, because an organization of any size should have a Safety Committee, because things are getting picked up, and if they're not drawing attention to, they're getting neglected, and somebody could get injured. So I'd certainly endorse that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Is there, was there a dashboard put out for this week that just wasn't included in the?
No, I don't think she, no, she didn't update it.
Okay.
The numbers are very, very low right now.
Oh, I just see, I apologize. It was for March 4th, okay.
She updates it every other week.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you.
Moving on to Item number 3388, School Improvement Plans Regarding High School, Gardner Academy, Gardner Middle School, and Gardner Elementary School. These were presented to us at our last meeting, are not before us for a vote this evening. Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Miss LaFreniere, to adopt the school improvement plans as presented at our previous meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3389, 2022, 2023 Program of Studies, as presented to us at our previous meeting. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move, second.
Motion made by Miss LaFreniere, seconded by Mr. Schwartz, to adopt the 2022, 2023 Program of Studies. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3390, Curriculum Coordinators Update, this was included in your packet for information this evening. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on this report? Moving on, Item number 3391, Grant Administrators Update, this was included in your packet this evening for information. Is there any discussion on this report?
Just thanks Courtney for doing a marvelous job.
Very much.
Keep the money coming.
Item number 3392, Special Education Update, this was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion on the report? Item number 3393, CPAC Update, this was included in your packet this evening. Is there any discussion on the report, other than thank you to Ms. Abbott, who was here Item number 3394, New School Building Project Update, Dr. Filigino.
Done a couple tours of the building, again, getting pictures, really excited. Right now, it's still on time and on budget, I'm very excited. So we have our moving plans that we'll be rolling out to teachers in terms of packing and getting ready for all that, so it's, it's getting very, very exciting.
Any questions, comments, concerns? We do get the weekly emails from Dr. Hemm with pictures and updates on the construction, so please make sure you are checking those in between our meetings. Item J, Communications, Dr. Filigino.
I'd just like to say, first off, you know, thank you to Becky McCaffrey for getting us, getting us through all this, and, and kind of getting those protocols, constantly updating them, making sure that they're, they're following the guidelines from the CDC, the DPH, DESI, and she's done a lot of reading and a lot of work, so I really appreciate that. Teachers, again, have been, just been doing a phenomenal job on our, our principals have been doing a phenomenal job in terms of curriculum for students. They've been working a lot on making sure student tasks are rigorous, make sure students are learning, so I'm very pleased with all that. I'm thrilled to be able to go back to musicals again, you know, to be able to go to the auditorium with the, which is, which is partially renovated, we're going to continue to renovate it, as we, we put some paint on the walls, and we're looking up, you know, to the sound system next, and I'm, I'm just very, I'm very excited to get back out and seeing things, seeing our kids and their smiling faces and singing nice and loudly. I do have to say, I'm also thrilled to walk through the schools and see kids, you know, some kids masks on, some kids masks off, doesn't seem to be an issue, you know, so I was, I was really pleased about that, so all in all, things going. all in all, things going very well in Gardner Public Schools.
Any questions, comments from the School Committee members? Moving on to final comments of the School Committee members, Mrs. Layton.
I wanted to echo what Dr. Pellegrino was saying, just about thanking the teachers for, it's, it's, we're two-thirds of the way through the year about, and I know, I, as a teacher, but also as a parent, like seeing my daughters still come home, and they're still excited about learning, it's, it says a lot about just kind of the stamina and the effort that's being put in by our teachers. It's, it's been a tough year, but I, I know that everyone was excited, but maybe a little bit trepidatious about masks coming off a couple weeks ago, but it seems, you know, I'm not gonna say it, I'm not gonna wood. And same thing, very excited to see the musical events coming back. I know that the band concert, even though the band, there was one of the band concerts delayed last week, but Mr. Schmidt had a really successful couple performances, and the choirs are this week, and my little, my little fifth grader gets to sing tomorrow night, so I'm just very excited to see the students performing and getting out there again, so, thank you.
Mrs. Hurst.
I got to see the fifth grade band do their performance last week, and they were absolutely amazing. It was great to be able to sit there and, and watch it. They're so enthusiastic, and, and one of them was like so excited, he was just like stamping his feet throughout the whole thing, it was just priceless. I wanted to, again, thank Katie Abbott and Dan Fort. What you didn't say about Dan, though, too, is that he's been really integral at the Safety Committee meetings, with helping with sports-related things, and he's been great with policy stuff when we've needed to streamline things, so. That's about it. Thank you, everybody.
Attorney Palavan.
Well, I was gonna talk about the musical at the high school, and then the middle school band and chorus, but also Elm Street School is having their musical next week, Frozen. I think it's Thursday night is the performance, so it's great that people are able to come back in and see the kids, and they all get to perform, and it's amazing how it's kind of all happening at once, too, right now. And then, obviously, spring sports will be starting soon, so that'll be fun as well.
Thursday, six-thirty P.M. Mr. DeVito.
I want to congratulate Dan again, because, especially from my perspective as his intern, all the stuff he does, and like the stuff I help him with, it's cool to see how much effort he's willing to put into our sports and our community, so congratulate him again. And then, it's definitely cool to see the auditorium finally done again, like everything's starting to come back to normal, especially as a senior, so good things coming.
Mr. Schwartz.
My wife and I hope to go to the middle school's grade six and seven musical. Missed all the others due to my multiple evening meetings. And looking forward to the high school, and I wrote a note to look at more information about the Elm Street School, so I want to make the tour of that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. LaFrenia.
I just want to congratulate Dan Fort, well deserved. And also, like you said, Becky McCaffrey, Norris, I mean, now that things are quietened down, you know, she, she deserves everything, and she, the work that she had to do through all this was unbelievable, so she deserves a much quieter time, for sure, so, and just let her know we all appreciate that, what a great job she did, that's all, thank you.
Mrs. Cormier.
I'm going back to earlier in the meeting with that budget presentation, it's a reminder of how much our community backs up these schools, and I really appreciate that. The presentation was great, it was very thorough and easy to understand, which I appreciate as a person who doesn't always understand numbers, but it was very well put together, so thank you for that. As everybody has said, it's great to see the kids being more normal. My family tends to be on the, the performing arts side of things, my daughter will be on stage at the high school Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if anybody wants to look for the little redhead girl. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. My closing comment here this evening is that a couple meetings ago, I mentioned that the high school wood shop is going to be making our chairs that we give out, and they made them, so I have the prototype here. One of the things that they added on top of the wood shop making the chairs is that our Makerspace class laser engraved the city seal along with our mass, Chair City, on the seats of the chairs as well. So, it still needs to be stained, but if anyone wants to come up and see what our students are doing in those two great programs that we have there, I want to thank Bill Jacobson and Demetrius Tyros for overseeing those two classes that helped make these possible. So, I'll leave that there. Anyone wants to take a look after, again, there's still a prototype, and they've made a couple different ones. They got creative with them, too. Some have arms, some don't, some are different types of chairs, and we need to see what they do in the end, but the laser engraved, I think, is one of the coolest spots that they did with the manufacturing classes. We do have an executive session to go into for Item L, under Exemption Three of General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, which allows a public body to go into executive session to discuss strategies with, excuse me, with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, if the chair so declares, as the chair so declares, such with the issues of collective bargaining with their employee unions that we have here. So, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mr. Schwartz, to go into executive session for the items presented, as I read earlier. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
So, you, you need to state if you'll be reconvening in open session?
Yeah, we'll reconvene open just.
Solely for the purpose of adjournment?
Adjournment, yes.
All in favor say aye. A roll call vote? Then, Mrs. Hillman, call the roll.
Mrs. Cormier, we go into executive sessions?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
This is Dr. LaFrenia?
Yes.
Mrs. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Blom?
Yes.
And Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, everyone to the table.
Thank you very much. We are now in executive session.